It is now, uh, good evening. It is now past 6:30. Uh, the regular scheduled board meeting for May, it is May 8th, 2018. Determination, we have a quorum. Ms. Letizia Lopez?
Present.
Mr. Eduardo Ramirez?
Present.
Ms. Judith Solis?
Present.
Dr. B.
Present.
Uh, Mr. Elias Velazquez?
Present.
And myself, Daniel Garcia is present as well. We do have a quorum. The pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Section 3, approval of minutes for the regular board meeting of April 11th, 2018. Do we have a motion for the approval of minutes?
Some more.
We have a motion by Dr. B. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Section 4, public forum. Uh, section 5, item 1, student recognition. Preparatory for early college high school, STC supplemental instructors for dual history oral presentation.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Daniel Garcia, Board President, Mr. Garcia, Superintendent of Schools, members of the Board, and audience that is present. This afternoon, the preparatory for early college high school is proud to recognize the accomplishments of our supplemental instructor students. Our SI program is in its second year, and it is a partnership between our district and South Texas College to provide students the opportunity to be trained, conduct observations, be observed, and to ultimately serve as TAs to their instructor. These students applied and were selected by a campus committee last year. Uh, I do have one student missing, so all six seniors have accomplished the goals of the program. All year, they have spent time in our dual history classes, and they have taught, conducted study sessions after school and on weekends, they have prepared reviews, and they have been available to approximately 80 students taking the history, uh, course right now. They are to me commended for their achievements and for completing the program. At this time, I will also introduce and ask Mr. Jose Rodriguez, the STC history professor, to say a few words about the program's extension, and then we will present them with certificates.
Good afternoon. My name is Juan Carlos Rodriguez. I'm from the, uh, STC Pecan Campus. I also teach dual enrollment at early college. Um, at every college and university throughout the, uh, throughout the country, we have what was called the supplemental instruction program, where we take students who have exceeded in difficult courses such as history, mathematics, or English. Uh, from there, they are selected to attend our courses afterwards, uh, after I give my class or the instructor gives a class, then they take over. They, uh, conduct, uh, activities. It's kinda like a peer-to-peer study sessions in hopes to, uh, uh, in helping improve grades, also help students succeed in their course, and also retention. Um, so what I decided to do is try to implement this program in an early college setting, which we did two years ago, and here we have, uh, our first supplemental instruction, uh, students, uh, in an early college setting. Now, this is the first time it has been implemented, not just only in the district, not just only in the Rio Grande Valley, but throughout the country. Uh, and we're hoping... And we're hoping to expand even further. Now, these students, they're going to set the foundation. I wish we can do a lot more, uh, but hopefully, we are trying to, uh, apply for some grant money, so hopefully, we can add a financial component, uh, to this program. Um, but again, these students, I'm very proud of them. Um, I don't know. I'm sorry. Uh, I'm very proud of these students. Uh, I'm very impressed as well. Again, they set the foundation for this, uh, program, and, uh, congratulations.
So at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and present just a certificate that reads Certificate of Achievement. This certificate is awarded to Brianna Ramos on May the 8th, 2018, for successfully completing the early college supplemental instruction program. Uh, Ms. Brianna, Ms. Brianna has received the merit scholarship, uh, and she will be attending Texas A&amp;M in the fall. I have Ms. Liza Garcia. Uh, Liza Garcia has received scholarships from universities from the east coast to the west coast and in Texas, but she has chosen to attend New York University. She'll be attending in the fall, where she has received a scholarship in the amount of $106,000. Uh, Ms. Anayi Pinajero, Ms. Anayi Pinajero is our valedictorian, and she, um, received a $16,000 scholarship to attend Texas A&amp;M International University in Laredo, where she will attend in the fall. Uh, Ms. Brianna, did I give you the wrong, Brianna Bassan? Ms. Bassan, uh, received the merit scholarship from Texas A&amp;M, and she will attend in the fall, okay? Aurora Garza, Aurora Garza is going to be a Texas Tech Red Raider in the fall. And, uh, I forgot to mention Brianna Ramos. Brianna Ramos, uh, received the Terry Scholarship Foundation in the amount of $68,000, and she will be attending Texas State University. Congratulations to the students and their parents. Oh, and Martin Lopez, who couldn't be here, uh, he will be attending UTRGV, okay? We can take a picture. I guess right here.
Middle School, Ringo Middle School, Rio High School, Food Service Department. Can we have any discussion or do we have a motion, item 2? We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 3, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from the City of Rio Grande City Parks and Recreation Department for 2018 girls' youth volleyball.
Good evening, Mr. Garcia. We're President, Mr. Garcia, Superintendent, members of the Board. Item number 3, attached you will find the request from the Rio Grande City Parks and Recreation Department for the use of the gymnasium from June the 4th through July the 20th, 2018. The volleyball league will be using the gymnasium for team practices and games. Liability insurance has been provided. Administration recommends approval.
Do we have a motion, item 3?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 4, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from the City of Rio Grande City Parks and Recreation Department for 2018 summer track and field program.
Item number 4, the City of Rio Grande City is requesting the use of Joe Ora Sanchez Stadium for the 2018 summer track and field program to start on June the 4th through, to be running through July the 31st, 2018. The district will charge a flat fee of $125 a trip plus a $2.50 per mile on the transportation. Proof of liability insurance has been provided. Administration recommends approval of this item.
Do we have a motion on item 4?
Is that 250 per miles at standard?
Yes, that was the standard, but it was raised to 250.
That was.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion, item 4?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 5, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from RGG, RGC Little League.
Item number 5, uh, Rio Grande City Little League is requesting the use of the district facilities to practice from May through August 2018. The facilities to be used or requested are the Fort Ringo Parade Fields, the Field by Ringo Middle School Ban Hall, the Fields by the Multipurpose Center, Fields by the Shipping and Receiving Warehouse, all elementary school playground fields, Veterans Middle School Parade Fields, Ringo Middle School Parade Baseball and Softball Fields, the Radler Baseball and Softball Fields, and liability insurance is also being provided. Another facility that is being requested is the face building to be used during one Saturday in the month of May. Administration recommends approval.
Do we have a motion on item 5?
I so move.
We have a motion by Dr. B. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 6, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from the Patricio Sines Jr. and Diana Ramirez for 2018 summer track program.
Item number 6, Patricio Sines Jr. has requested the use of the Ringo Middle School Field and Field House, the ACES Elementary Gym, Weight Room, Boys and Girls Restrooms, and Sanchez Stadium to have track and field practice. He will use the facilities on May the 16th through August the 4th, 2018. Practices will be held on Mondays through Thursdays from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. The district will provide a waiver from legal counsel to Mr. Sines to get signatures from parents before starting practices. Mr. Sines will also get a copy from parents of health insurance coverage for the participants. Administration recommends approval pending the delivery of the waivers.
Do we have a motion, item 6?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 7, consider and take possible action on memorandum of agreement between the City of Rio Grande, huh? The, there's City of Rio Grande Boys and Girls Youth Summer Program and Rio Grande City CISD and use of the Ramiro Villegas Gym.
Item number 7, the Rio Grande City Boys and Girls Youth Club has requested the use of the Ramiro Villegas Gymnasium. The club will be using the facility from June the 1st through June the 30th, 2018, on weekdays from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. The Boys and Girls Youth Club Program will be, uh, open to all RGG students, and they will be charging participants a fee between $60 and $70. Administration recommends approval of the use of the Ramiro Villegas Gymnasium.
Do we have a motion, item 7?
I abstain. I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All, uh, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, with Dr. B abstaining on this item. Item 8, consider and take possible action on donations to RGG CISD.
Item number 8, the following donations have been received by the district. Total monetary donations are $6,831. We also received 2 K9s with a market value of $8,000 each. We received Easter Eggs from Walmart totaling $776.60 for a grand total of donations of Administration recommends approval of donations to the district.
Do we have a motion, item 8?
I abstain.
Oh. So move. We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, again with Ms., uh, Dr. B has abstained on item 8. Item 9, consider and take possible action on application, on pay application number 6 for the district-wide energy savings and facilities and facility improvement program.
Item number 9, attached you will find pay application number 6 for the district-wide energy savings and facility improvement program. The total for pay application number 6 is for $908,456.76 as of April the 30th, 2018, to E3 Integral Solutions Incorporated. It is our recommendation that pay application be approved for payment.
Do we have a motion on item 9?
Some more.
We have a motion by Dr. B. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 10, consider and take possible action on IRS employer shared responsibility payment.
Item number 10, the Internal Revenue Service has made a preliminary calculation of the employer shared responsibility payment that the district owes. IRS records show that for one or month, or more months of the year 2015, at least one of the full-time employees the district identified on Form 1095(c) was allowed the premium tax credit on his or her individual income tax return. The IRS has made a preliminary calculation of $29,900 since the district offered minimum essential coverage to at least 70% of the full-time employees, but at least one of those full-time employees was certified as being allowed the premium tax credit because the health coverage was, uh, considered unaffordable. Administration recommends approval of the proposed ESRP of $29,900.
Do we have a motion, item 10?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 11, consider and take possible action on budget amendment number 2018-3.
Agenda item number 11, attached you will find budget amendment 2018-3. The amendment is being prepared to revise the current budget. Revisions to expenditures are presented for your review and approval. Administration recommends approval of the budget amendment.
Do we have a motion, item 11?
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 12, consider and take possible action on tax refunds for the month of April 2018.
Item number 12, presented is a request of approval of tax refunds for the month of April 2018 totaling $7,043.76. Attached you will find the summary of the refunds. Administration recommends approval of the tax refunds.
Do we have a motion, item 12?
Some more.
We have a motion by Dr. B. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 13, consider and take possible action on requisitions 5,000 and over in a 12-month aggregate.
Good evening, Mr. President, uh, members of the Board, Mr. Garcia. We do have requisitions for your consideration starting on, I believe, on page, uh, 156. Uh, there is proper funding available for all these requests. I don't know if you have any questions on any particular one or, or whatsoever, but there is proper funding available.
Do we have a most, or a discussion or questions on item 13? Do we have a motion, item 13?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 14, consider and take possible action on awarding of the following bid. RFQ 1829, external auditor services.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Um, the district, um, went out on, on bid or request for qualifications, I should say, I should say, for external auditor services. Um, we received the qualification, or one qualification, on Wednesday, uh, April 25th at 2:00 PM, and this is from Noel Garza CPA out of, out of Edinburgh. A, um, we, we reviewed the, um, the qualification, and our recommendation is to, um, award the qualification to, uh, this firm, and it, it's a two-step process. One, the first step is, uh, just to get the qualifications, and then if it's accepted, then the district, um, uh, negotiates a, a fee for, for his services, or for the CPA's services for, for one fiscal year, which would be for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year.
Any questions? Do we have a motion, item 14?
Some more.
We have a motion by Dr. B. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 15.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Consider and take possible action on request from Perceptor, Zeta Delta Chapter of Rio Grande Sigma Phi International to rename North Grammar Elementary School or any other school building to Alberto Barrera.
On that one, sir, it's supposed to read, uh, Alberto Encelada Celia Barrera Elementary.
Okay. I was, I was gonna have to table it, but that being the case, I'll, I'll move to approve that item as presented, with that, with the change from Alberto Barrera to Alberto Encelia Barrera.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 16, consider and take possible action on 2017, 2018 summer working calendar and times.
Mr. Board President, members of the Board, Mr. Garcia, Superintendent of Schools, on item 16, respectfully submit a proposal for the summer schedule, summer working schedule to begin June 4th and ending August 9th. Uh, the district will be closed July 2nd through July 13th. Uh, is attached in your packet, you do see the times and dates with the Monday through Thursday schedule. This item was presented to Policy and Personnel Committees, April 23rd. Administration recommends approval.
Do you have any questions on item 16? Do we have a motion on, for approval on item 16?
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 17, consider and take possible action, 2017, 2018 summer wellness schedule and locations.
Mr. President, item 17, along our approved summer schedule, we do have a summer, uh, health and wellness schedule, as you see in your packet. We have activities ranging throughout the district from walking, cardio, basketball at the ACES Elementary, weight room, and aerobics. Uh, these, these events or activities will be available to all district employees. This was also presented to Policy and Personnel Committees, and Administration recommends approval.
Do we have a motion, item 17?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Soli, uh, by Dr. B. Same. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 18, consider and take possible action on working calendars for the 2018, 2019 school year.
Mr. President, on item 18, we have the proposed 2018, 2019 working calendars for our employees. These range from 232 days to 180 days, depending on the position of the employee. Uh, we do have a list attached in your packet. This item was also presented to Personnel and Policy Committees respectfully, and Administration recommends approval.
Do we have a motion, item 18?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 19, consider and take possible action on letter of agreement between Robert J. Miller and Associates Incorporated and Rio Grande City CISD to provide grant, grants development, funding, raising council services.
Mr. Board President, as you are well aware, our Board did attend the National Conference in San Antonio, a board conference, and a, a great initiative was brought back to Administration. We're looking at new revenues for the district. Uh, attached, you see the agreement between the district and Robert J. Miller, or the possible agreement. This was sent to our local legal team, and, and changes were made, as you can see in your packet. Um, some of our Board has taken initiative to visit departments and, and begun a needs assessment, which was presented to Robert J. Miller this afternoon with a great meeting with the Superintendent. Um, very important, the agreement was sent to our local legal, and they do agree with the agreement. The changes were made, and attached also in your packet from committee, from Personnel and Policy, we did, the committee did ask for references, and there's two references attached in your packet. Administration recommends approval of this. It's, uh, quarterly payments of $7,900 for a one-year agreement.
Do we have a motion, item 19?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Item 20, consider and take possible action on memorandum of understanding between South Texas College and Rio Grande City CISD for the 2018, 2019 school year.
Good evening, Board President, uh, Mr. Daniel Garcia, members of the Board, Mr. Alfredo Garcia, Superintendent of Schools, and community members. This, uh, South Texas College has submitted the MOU for the preparatory for early college high school. This memorandum is an understanding and agreement entered into by and between South Texas College and the district. The parties to this memorandum of understanding desire to establish Rio Grande City, CISD, and the early college high schools, grades 9 through 12, and they will provide the dual enrollment courses for the academic dual credit college courses for our high school students. The district recommends approval.
Do we have a motion, item 20?
I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Lopez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 21, consider and take possible action on staff development trainings for time equivalency program.
This is an agreement for contractual services between several consultants and the RGG CISD School District. There are several, uh, services that will be provided for our time, uh, equivalency program for our TEP. Uh, inclusive are the Leader and Me, the Custom Day Coaching, Don Vinas with Social Studies Success, Sid Letts Education on Talk, Read, Talk, and Write, 3A Great Academic, uh, Academic Language Builders, uh, Dr. Mike on Professional Development for Kinder, Pre-Kinder, and CDs, and Dr. Gilberto Soto on Learning Through Music and Songs. These trainings will take place throughout the months of June through August. The total fees for all our consultants thus far, because we're still working on our TEP program, is approximately $34,080 for all services. This fee includes all trainer expenses, including travel and accommodations, uh, for the above mentioned trainings thus far. Funding is available through Title III, 263, Title IV, Part A, 289, Rural and Low Income Grant, 270. The district respectfully recommends approval for these trainings.
Do we have a motion on item 21?
I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Lopez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 22, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase the Performance Matters Growth Platform Program.
The Performance Matters, uh, K through 12, uh, Performance Growth Platform is a continuous improvement of instruction and learning platform. This Performance Matters Growth Platform includes tools for student assessment, development, and delivery, as well as educator professional development, evaluation, observation, and calibration. This is not anything that is new to us. This is the Thrive, which, uh, it's the, the platform that we use for staff development for our TEP program, so that teachers can go on and TEP program so that teachers can go on and sign in and make sure that they get the hours that they need. The name is changing, however, because it is changing, we needed to bring this particular item back to the board. So from Thrive, it is changing to Performance Matters Growth Platform. It's approximately fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. There is funding available through one ninety-nine SCE. The district respectfully recommends approval.
Do we have a motion item twenty-two? We have a motion by Dr. B, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-three, considering take possible action on resolution to sanction four-H organizations as an extracurricular activity.
This particular item is a request from the four-H members of Starr County. They are requesting that the four-H organization be sanctioned as an extracurricular activity under the regulations that are set forth under the Nineteenth Texas Administrative Code. We respectfully ask for approval for the sanction of our four-H organization to be an extracurricular activity. There is no cost to the district.
Do we have a motion item? Has it never been an extracur-
It's not an extracurricular activity. The four-H club has always been just an organization and we do have students that participate in the four-H and every time they go out and they show their shows or their things that they do with the program, they are usually marked, you know, not present because it's not sanctioned as an extracurricular. So we are requesting that it be sanctioned as such and it would be treated as such as an extracurricular for our district.
Do we have a motion item twenty-three?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second? We have a second by Dr. B, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-four, considering take possible action on adjunct faculty request between Starr County Extension Office, Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extensions Agent and Rio Grande City CISD.
The Starr County Extension Staff, because of the fact that we are making the four-H an extracurricular activity as well, the Starr County Extension Staff is requesting approval of two adjunct faculty members in agreement with the Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District. The faculty adjunct agreements, there are two members and the members are Omar Montemayor and Yolanda Morado from Starr County and they will be considered adjunct faculty members because they are the ones that work with our students as well and we respectfully recommend approval.
And at no cost.
At no, no cost to the district, absolutely.
That was one of our questions during the committee meeting.
Do we have a motion item twenty-four?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-five, considering take-
Thank you.
Consider take possible action on request for permission to purchase the comprehensive model leader in me program for Ringo Elementary and Gruya Elementary.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Ms. Garcia Superintendent of Schools. The Leader in Me is a comprehensive K through twelve school improvement model that focuses on leadership, culture and academics. Schools that have implemented this model have had huge success in academics, attendance, school behavior, family engagement, et cetera. Rio Grande City CISD is requesting to begin to offer this model in two of our elementary schools, which are, like you mentioned, Ringo Elementary and Gruya Elementary. The total cost for both campuses to start the implementation of the model for the first year is seventy-three thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars with ten cents. Funding is available through one eighty-nine. Administration respectfully recommends approval for the comprehensive model leader in me.
I've heard about the program and I was gonna ask, I know a lot of the campuses or teachers seem to want to have this at their schools. Like, how did we decide what schools got it or why did Ringo and Gruya?
They volunteered, sir, Ringo Elementary and Gruya Elementary. The principal volunteered to implement this model.
But I think in the committee meeting, we discussed about whether or not, if it was successful, which we suspect it will be, that then we could talk about offering it up to the rest of our district campuses. We would want to participate and that we would find the money. We did discuss that, we know that two campuses, it's kind of like to launch, I guess that'll be like our model schools and from there, we talked about, hopefully it'll catch on and we could implement it district-wide.
Yes, ma'am.
If this is sort of the model, the Kenny picks.
If approved, I hope we keep hearing about it as much as we've heard about it thus far. I know people are excited about it, so just keep us posted on the progress about this.
Yes, sir, I sure will.
Any more questions? Do we have a motion item twenty-five?
I would move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-six, considering take possible action on new PE health course for middle school and permission to develop timelines.
Item number twenty-six, Rio Grande City has traditionally taught one course in middle schools as per the health teaks. However, because of a recent change in the health teaks, campuses must teach the teaks at sixth grade and also in seventh and or in eighth grade. So all of the teaks for sixth grade must be taught and students must demonstrate proficiency. However, the districts, we do have the flexibility of when and how to offer these particular teaks and in whatever instructional arrangements we choose to do so. So what we are requesting is that we teach the health in our PE curriculum and in order for us to do that or to incorporate the required teaks, the district is going to appoint teachers slash coaches from each of the three middle schools, one coach from each middle school campus to develop the timelines that will allow us to incorporate these health education teaks embedded with the PE. These individuals will be hired for twelve hours at a rate of thirty dollars per hour for a total of a thousand eighty dollars total. So each teacher would be receiving three hundred and sixty dollars. Depending on the working calendars, these three individuals will compete the twelve hours between June the fourth through June the fourteenth of two thousand eighteen. The funding source for this project is available through SCE one ninety-nine and the district respectfully recommends the approval for these three coaches.
Any questions? Do we have a motion item twenty-six?
I move to approve this item.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-seven, considering take possible action, College First STEM Summer School Camps.
Good evening, Mr. Daniel Garcia, Board President, Mr. Alfredo Garcia Superintendent of Schools, board members and audience present. College First is a company that has been providing STEM camps on the areas of science, social studies, reading and writing. Our district has been bringing them in the past two years through our migrant and bilingual ESL program and we're respectfully recommending approval for summer camps for our summer school ESL students, bilingual and ESL students in the four campuses that will be hosting summer school, which is La Union Elementary, Ringo Elementary, Gruya Middle School and Ringo Middle School. Through these camps, the students are going to be engaged in academic enrichment activities, content competitions and mentorship experiences. Total cost will be fifteen thousand dollars and funding is available through Title III, two sixty-three. So we respectfully recommend approval.
Any questions, item twenty-seven? Do we have a motion on item twenty-seven? We have a motion by Ms. Lopez, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-eight, considering take possible action on letter of agreement between Gomez and Gomez Dual Language Consultants and Rio Grande City CISD to provide training for teachers on June eleventh, thirteenth, twenty eighteen and June eighteen and nineteen, twenty eighteen.
Yes, on this item, Mr. Board President, we're getting ready for the implementation of dual language in the third year, moving on to second grade. In order to do that, we need to train the second grade teachers with the three-day initial training that is required for the dual language program with consultants. The consultants are willing to come in June eleventh through the thirteenth. Also, in providing training to the other grade levels that have been implementing the dual language, the area where we need to grow is writing and so the consultants will be coming in on the eighteen and nineteen to work with kinder and first grade just in the area of writing through dual language, which is in both languages, the English and the Spanish. Total cost for these trainings will be eighteen thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. That includes all the materials, all the supplies and we funding is available through Title III, two sixty-three as well and we respectfully recommend approval for this as discussed in the curriculum committee.
Do we have a motion item twenty-eight? We have a motion by Dr. B, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item twenty-nine, considering take possible action on request for permission to participate in the conference for advancement of mathematics technology in Houston, Texas on July sixteen, twenty eighteen through July eighteen, twenty eighteen in Houston, Texas.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Daniel Garcia, members of the board, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Alfredo Garcia. Camped is a conference for the advancement of mathematics technology and it is an annual conference for K through twelve mathematics teachers. The conference is sponsored jointly by the Texas Council of Teachers of Mathematics, the Texas Association of Supervisors of Mathematics and the Texas Section of the Mathematical Association of America. We are requesting permission for six teachers from Rio Grande City High School, two from Early College High School and two from La Gruya to attend this conference. The total cost is seven thousand dollars and funds are available through one ninety-nine SCE. We recommend approval.
Do we have a motion item twenty-nine? We have a motion by Ms. Lopez, do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item thirty, considering take possible action on amendment of two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen summer school program.
Good evening, Mr. Daniel Garcia School Board President, board members, Mr. Garcia Superintendent of Schools, ladies and gentlemen. As presented before Board Committee meeting on Thursday, May the third, Federal Programs is respectfully requesting the approval of an additional eleven custodians for campus sites for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen summer school program. The eleven custodian positions will be at Gruya High School, Rio High School, Ringold Middle School, Ringold Elementary, Gruya Middle, La Union Elementary and AC two E Elementary. Total cost of these positions will be thirteen thousand two hundred. Funding will come from one ninety-nine general budget. We respectfully recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion item thirty? We have a motion by Dr. B, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything on reports? It is seven fourteen, we'll be heading to closed session under the authority of the Texas Government Code Section five-five-one point oh-seven-one. It is now seven forty-four, we're out of closed session. Item A requires no action. Item B, do we have a motion item B?
I move that we approve item B as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez on item B, do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item C, do we have a motion item C?
I move that we approve item C as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez on item C, do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item D, do we have a motion item D?
I move that we approve item D as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do we have a motion item E?
I move that we approve item E as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second? We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Item F?
I move that we approve item F as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez on item F, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Velazquez, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And item G, do we have a motion item G?
I move that we approve item G as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign.
Mr. Ramirez makes a good point that we would be remiss if we didn't mention two things. First of all, to all our teachers out there, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. We thank every single one of them, we're so appreciative of everything that they do, all of our employees here at RGCC ISD. And on the second note, not so light, we ask everyone to keep Dr. Paul Doino in our prayers. He's struggling right now with his health. He's at DHR, I don't know if he's accepting visitors or not. I know he's in ICU, but definitely he's in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you, everyone.
Do we have a, it's seven forty-eight, do we have a motion for adjournment? We have a motion, do we have a second? The meeting is now adjourned.